I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly, and Robert is available with listening devices if need be. We'll start with routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the agenda, Commissioner Benega.
I would like to amend the agenda to, are we going to defer item 11?
Just remove it.
Just remove it. Remove item 11 to a future date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the removal of item number 11. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Now, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Now, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of April 29, 2014.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 29. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And item B is consider a motion to correct the commission minutes from March 11, 2014. On that date, the commission approved the purchase of two pickup trucks for the highway department off of the state of South Dakota contract awarded to Lam Motors. However, the purchase is being made from Sioux Falls Ford, who has agreed to supply those vehicles at the state contract price in accordance with STCO 5-18C-8. The correction in the minutes is to state that the purchase of the trucks will be made from Sioux Falls Ford.
Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Corrections.
I have a motion and a second to correct the commission minutes from March 11. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $339,493.25.
Pay the bills with the county.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Comment from Commissioner Barth.
My comment today is one individual for a psyche evaluation costs us $10,200.
Do you have an issue with those psyche bills? Are there any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four, reports. A, the Interlakes Community Action Partnership, 2013 audited financial statements have been received and they are placed on file in the auditor's office. And B, there is a presentation of the 2013 annual report for the Minnehaw County Office of the Public Defender. Tracy Smith.
Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning.
You had in your packets a report from the public defender's office. I'm wondering if there's any questions for Tracy concerning her report. She has added something to the report that I don't think was in there in the past, and that was non-billable hours, and put it in a graph for it, which made it much easier to see.
I don't know if you had any questions about that.
Any questions for Tracy? Commissioner Benega.
I'd just like to make a comment. Tracy, I appreciate your extra work to Mike Miller for putting this together and for all the additional information that we've requested over the last year. That with reorganizing your department and doing some long-range planning, strategic planning, is frankly a really positive thing that you have led us through as a county commission department, and I appreciate your extra work and your extra involvement in getting that done, and certainly want to thank you and Mike for those additional efforts.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to work with Margaret Sumpson. She's been really beneficial to our department this year.
Are there any other comments or questions on the public defender's report? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you. Looking at the increase that happened between 2011 and 2012 in the cases opened, do you have any reason to understand what caused that great increase?
From 2011 to 2012?
Yeah.
I really don't. I think the number of cases, it fluctuates from year to year. It just depends on the changes in the cycle. It's hard to say. It's a conglomeration of many things from, we're dependent upon the number of arrests in the community. A lot of it can depend on the Sioux Falls Police Department being added new positions, you know, and one thing that Mike and I were talking about that was different was the 100 days of heat can make a significant difference in our caseloads. We saw a big increase in cases during that period of time. It was a busy summer when we had that going on.
I had not considered weather. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Tracy? Okay. I think that report is on file if anyone would like to review it. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Item number five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Jen Ottington of Human Resources. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about those routine actions.
Move the routine actions.
Second.
A motion and a second for routine actions. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for May 2014.
The county had a few significant anniversaries during the month of May. Kristin Trana, who is the administrative coordinator at the sheriff's office, has five years of service. With 10 years of service, we have Michael Miller, who is the chief deputy public defender, also was with us this morning. He must have left. And then also 10 years of service, Michael Brendan, who is a certified civil process server with the sheriff's office. And then 15 years of service with the county, Tracy Smith, who is the public defender, also was here this morning. And Randy Sample, who's a senior trial attorney with our state attorney's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Item D is, oh, C is to recognize volunteers and county government for April 2014.
During the month of April, we had over 200 volunteers that gave their time and service to a number of different departments within the county. The Siouxland Heritage Museums, the public defender's office, the sheriff's office, emergency management department, and the jail. We just want to thank them for volunteering their time and efforts in helping us here at the county.
I'll talk to you afterwards.
And item D is approval of the 2014 affirmative action plan.
Last week, I presented you with the information from the 2014 affirmative action plan, and along with a link to the full plan for your review. Today, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I have the signature page with Cindy Jepson to sign off on final approval of the plan, if that is what you do. Beyond that, we'll ask for our approval or signatures from all the elected department heads as well. And then, as I mentioned last week, we'll have some changes for our 2015 affirmative action plan. As we track all the data for the women and minorities, we will also need to track that kind of data for veterans and individuals with disabilities. So later this year, we will undertake the project of implementing that into our application system so that we can gather that information from not only our applicants, but also post-hire and our employees. So additionally, we'll need to survey all of our employees to gather that information as well, so that we're ready to go for our January 1, 2015 date. And with that, I would just ask for approval of the plan.
Okay. Commissioner Benega?
Jen, last week when you were here, you briefly talked about the guard individuals and not being able to use those statistics as veterans. Is that typical?
The report that we have to file only lets us report on veterans in certain areas, certain types of veterans. So that's all we can include in our report, but Carrie and I have been talking about this, and we feel that it would be beneficial to us to gather more information from our employees so that we have a better hold on how many veterans truly do we have. Also, how many active military, how many reservists, and how many guardians? Because I think there's a lot of employees, particularly in our sheriff's office, and I'd like to be able to report on that. I think that shows that our support of military, as well, current military as well as veterans.
Well, over the years, I've noticed the number of people that have been deployed, and it seems to me that they need to be recognized somehow in those statistics, otherwise it doesn't seem accurate to me.
I would agree, and I think that we can identify them. Perhaps it's not included in the formal report, but certainly it's worth mentioning and including in some sort of way.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd agree.
Are there any questions, or additional questions for Jen about the affirmative action plan? Any look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as amended or suggested. Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item is notice and requests. Item A, a notice from the South Dakota Department of Health of disinterment/reinterment permit issued for the remains of Christopher Ripentrop. Item B is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing for the 2014, 2015 malt beverage license renewal applications. And normally, we don't have to have a public hearing for the renewal of the applications unless establishments have had a violation within the past calendar year. And this year, there have been four establishments that have had violations, so they'll have to be coming forward before the commission with a public hearing. So I want authorization to publish that notice.
So I'm looking for an authorization to publish.
So, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider 14-04 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to C Commercial District. The east 120 feet of Track 2 of Wold's tracks, except H-1. In the northwest quarter, northwest quarter of Section 27, Township 103 North, Range 49 West, located at the corner of South Dakota Highway 115 and County Highway 122. Scott Anderson.
Thank you.
Good morning, Scott.
Scott Anderson from County Planning. Today, I'm bringing before you a rezoning request, 14-4. This is to rezonate a little less than half an acre from A1 Agriculture to C Commercial District. This is more commonly known or located at Midway Corner. I think most of us know where that's at, between Sioux Falls and Baltic. This did go to the planning commission last Monday, and it received a unanimous recommendation for approval. Today, I'm asking you to authorize, a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice. The hearing would be on May 27, and at that time, we would have an opportunity for public input, any kind of public testimony, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Scott? This is to authorize the publishing of the hearing on May 27.
Move to authorize.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to vacate a portion of Rudolph Avenue, beginning at the southeast edge of Ashton Street and extending south to its end at the east edge of Melissa Street at the regular county commission meeting on June 3, 2014. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Once again, Scott Anderson from the planning department. Today, we have a request to vacate a portion of Rudolph Avenue. Actually, the majority of Rudolph Avenue. This came from the property owner that is located right here, and the property owner is JT RT Properties. This is the location of the Hyman Trucking. They make fire apparatus and so on. Currently, there is no Rudolph Street. It ends at the end of Ashton. The applicant would like to vacate this road so they can allow for some future development here in the very near future. I'm asking that you authorize the publisher or the auditor to publish a hearing notice for a hearing to vacate this portion of Rudolph Avenue on June 3.
Any questions for Scott? I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have one question, Scott. Is it all the way from Ashton, all the way to Melissa, and there is no road there? It's just dirt?
There is no road. So what we would do is, I've been working with Steve Van Buskirk and the applicant, the property owner. What we'll do is vacate that portion of Rudolph Avenue. They will install a cul-de-sac at the end of Ashton Street, which will allow fire apparatus and emergency vehicles to be able to turn around if they need to. And then, at a future time, they are looking at redeveloping or submitting a new development proposal request for this area that is undeveloped right now.
Okay. And there won't be an issue with access because you can come down on that Cottonwood Avenue? Which there's no street there either, at this point.
It ends there. So that area, basically south of Ashton Street, is going to be potentially developed someday, but the way that the lot configuration was, or the way that the road configuration was, it sort of pinches out JT RT properties, and they would like to, they need expansion, and as fire trucks and whatnot get bigger, they need a wider area to be able to pull these trucks in and out to work on. So the building is going to be a little bit wider, which facilitates the need for the vacation of Rudolph Avenue.
So I have a motion and a second for the auditor to publish notice of the hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
There are no petition for compromise of meaning today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when the public can speak about anything that's not on the agenda for today. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on with regular business.
Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider a drainage permit application, number 14-13, from Tom Opitz to conduct agricultural drainage on Track 1, Caleb Subdivision, Northwest Quarter, Section 18, Township 101 North, Range 51 West, Wall Lake Township. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. This is a request that was brought forth by the applicant, Mr. Opitz, Mr. Tom Opitz, and the applicant has attempted to obtain the downstream property owner's acknowledgement and signature on the drainage permit, was unable to, and would like to proceed on with the potential drainage work, and so has requested a hearing before the Drainage Board, which is the county commission. I have a slide presentation that I will show you. I did send out notices to the, of today's hearing on April 9, to all the downstream property owners for at least a half a mile at the outlet of the proposed drainage project. This involved one downstream property owner. So basically, the property that Mr. Opitz owns is shown where the area in red, which is outlined basically in this area here. This was the downstream property owner, and the outlet of the drainage project tile will be right here, and you can see how the drainage, and you sort of can see where the wet areas are as we go through this, and I have slides. I met with Mr. Opitz on, I believe it was April 11, and we drove through his fields, and he showed me, he was gracious enough to show me the areas that were wet. I did notice that there are very well-defined waterways. There was also evidence of where you could see wet areas, and that was evident by the salt buildup on the soil. So there was obvious wet areas. There was also obvious drainage areas, and I'll go through those pictures for you. Excuse me. This is looking basically straight south, near Highway 42, and you can start to see the drainage area right through here.
Where's Highway 42 on that front map?
Highway 42 would be...
On that first map?
Up here.
Okay.
And the applicant lives right here. So this is his property across State Highway 42, which is right here.
So Scott, does everything drain to the...
East.
It all drains to the east, and eventually, this works its way towards Wall Lake. So here's another, you can see the grassy area and wet area as it moves to the, again, I believe this was sort of to the east. You can see where the wet area was down in here, so there's a low area, and this drains that way. Here, I took this picture because this is a wet area, but if you look closely, you can sort of see this white discoloration here in this area. That is evidence of the wet soil that's there, and then as it evaporates, leaves behind the minerals and salt deposits. This is the culvert that goes across the road. Eventually, that all goes to the east. There's a well-defined channel. This shows, there's actually two culverts. You can see one was corrugated pipe, and you can see the back of my vehicle. Then there was another pipe about 50 feet, 35 feet to the north, and that was a cement culvert. Here, you can see where that, where the wet area is in this grassy area. And this is, this is close to, I'm standing about where the outlet would be for the tile project. This is still on the applicant's property. The neighboring property basically is over here on the fence line, and you can see this is looking basically due east, and there's quite a well-defined channel there or ditch. And once again, this is looking back to the west. You can see that ditch area that goes all the way back towards the west. This is looking, from the outlet, looking back to the north. You sort of can see this undulates in this area, and that's why they'll be going through sort of these low areas as it undulates. Once again, this is standing near the outlet. It's looking back up this way where they'll be doing some tiling. And once again, this is, oops, this is stand, this is close to the, where the outlet would be, and looking back up towards the hill.
These are all looking at the applicant's property, correct?
Yes. And this, the applicant lives over here, and this would be Highway 42. You can see, sort of see how this all sort of drains, and there's some lower areas there. And then this is where it goes onto the neighbor's property, I believe, and then that was it. But I'll go back to the main photo, which shows the proposed drainage tiles. There's approximately 8,000 feet of tile, and I believe he said it was going to be, let me look here. Well, it would vary. It's going to be five-inch, I believe, tile, and there'll be like 10 runs. They'll all sort of connect into what is this well-defined drainage area. This then drains, there's like a nice channel there that continues to drain. You can see right here is a stock pond. I had parked my vehicle right here to show that there's those two culverts that cross the road right here, and then that, let's see here, that's on 461st Avenue, and then it continues on, there's a fairly well-defined channel that continues on towards Wall Lake and into that Wall Lake drainage basin. So I'd be glad, our recommendation is that, my findings is that the proposed tile lines will be placed in traditionally wet areas on this property and areas that function all within the same watershed, and staff is recommending approval of, recommending that the Drainage Board approve Drainage Permit 14-13. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I believe the applicant's here, and I believe the neighbors are here as well.
Okay. Any questions for Scott at this point? Commissioner Barth?
Scott, looking at the map you've got up, is that drainage way one of the blue lines that we discussed? Is that why it's blue?
No, it's not an intermittent...
It's not a blue line?
It's not a blue line. It just shows the drainage channel, and it came up on our GIS mapping that way, but...
It came up on the GIS, but doesn't that indicate that it was one of those quote-unquote "blue" lines?
An intermittent stream? It shows that there's an intermittent waterway there, but we don't identify them as blue lines with our GIS, and we didn't adopt that.
We did not adopt that. That's correct.
But it is, it does show that there is a waterway, a drainage waterway there.
Any other questions for Scott?
Well, Scott, I'm trying to get the location because we own property right out by there, and maybe they can tell. Where is the towers? Are they on the right side of, on the east side of 461?
I'm not sure which towers. Cell towers?
No, there's a, we have property on 266, and I just want to make sure this isn't a budding or a property, because if there is, I cannot be a part of this discussion, so...
I don't, I don't, you'd have to ask the state's attorney, but you're not a downstream property owner.
No, I realize that, but Mike, but if I'm next door to them, that's a problem.
This is 265.
Yeah, that's in your judgment. Can you tell us what that cross street is up there in the corner on the picture?
This is 265 right here.
I mean, vertically.
And this is, this would be, this would be 461st right here, 461st.
460.
This would be 460.
Okay. Does that give you a better idea?
And then Wall Lake is about 462nd?
That's correct.
I'm going to step down.
All right. Any other questions for Scott? This is a public hearing, so we would hear from the proponent if you have anything to say, so that would be Tom Opitz. If you have anything that you'd like to say regarding this?
Not really.
If you'd just identify yourself and give your address.
Yes, Tom Opitz.
And your address, yep.
46034, 265th Street, Hartford.
And do you have anything you want to add to what Scott has said about your drainage?
Well, the only thing I would say is that's the flow of the water. That's just the way it goes anyway. We're not changing anything. We're not doing anything different.
Do you have much runoff? Is it just mostly when it's a rain?
Just the hard rain, then it goes, you know, that's why all the other ditches were in there. Gets rid of the heavy, you know, the heavy water. And then this is just to get rid of all the soggy stuff. It's all farmable land. It's just hard to farm when it's wet. And that's all.
Has there been any ditch cleanout in that area at all?
Yes. It's all been done the last two or three years.
Okay. Any other questions? Jeff?
The upstream property from you, is that just to the west there then? I mean, are they flowing down onto you from the west? Is that...
From the west, yeah, a little bit, yep.
Any other...
Yep, that's just the way the water runs.
Any other questions for Tom? Do you have anything else?
Not at this time. Thank you.
The opponents, if you would like to speak? Good morning.
My name's John Bowe, and I own the quarter east where he wants the tile.
Okay.
And you can see on my quarter how it's always wet. Well, he sends so much more water on me, well, my quarter, then it's going to be that much worse.
Have you... Go ahead.
Before Tom come along and bought that property, we used to farm it. Some of these spots, he's got the ditches out. He never drained the farming through when we used to farm it. And I farm, currently farm a small square piece that is, right, this small square piece right here. From right here is where the water spot originally starts, and it just kind of, you know, the more water there is, the farther it peaks up into here, and same with this one, you know, the wetter. Whoops.
That's okay, Scott.
The wetter the here is from the water in here, it just, you know, backs up all the way up into this piece that I still currently farm.
And that right in there...
And that's right in here was...
Is kind of a slew, and now he wants to drain it.
Can you identify yourself and your address, please? Sorry.
My name's Jason Bowe. I'm John's son.
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. John Bowe, so have you considered the idea of putting tile in on your property?
Oh, yeah. But you've got to afford to pay for it, so that's why I haven't done nothing. I mean, a good neighbor would come over and talk to me, and we would have maybe agreed on something like, you know, okay, let's get together and put in a tile, and you pay for part of it because you're wanting to dump your water on me. But no, he's not a good neighbor, didn't even come over and speak to me.
Has there been any drainage on your property, Mr. Bowe? Have you cleaned out the ditches at all on your property?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
They were just the ditches of the gentleman that owned the property before us hit me.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Mr. Bowe? Anything else you want to say?
I'm just saying, if he would have come over and talked to me, maybe we could have got to an agreement, you know? You pay for part of the tile, and I can pay for... got to agreement, you know, you pay for part of the tile, and I can pay for keep that water moving, instead of it all just going to set there now on my ground, and I won't be able to farm it.
Okay.
So, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner? I have another question for Scott, I guess.
Okay, Scott.
Scott, you know, looking at this project, if there is a wetland there, it must have been approved by the NRCS, right?
Yes, I can, I think I have that in front of me. What, let's see if I have that map. That's a, I believe it's approximately 2.9 acres, and it was a previously converted wetland.
So that is a wetland?
If it's been previously drained and messed with, then it's no longer counts towards, towards holding up a project.
Okay.
If it's been disturbed, and so that's what, am I right there, Scott?
That's correct.
Yeah, if it's been disturbed by men's actions previously, it no longer falls into that natural category.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott? Tom, do you have any additional comments?
Tom Opitz, when I first applied for this, I went to Scott, and we sent our downstream deals. The Bowles went in and talked to Scott, and they said they were going to come to me. My proposal, when I talked to Scott, was we would tile up into theirs a little bit, you know, to help their two wet spots even more, to make all this water flow. But nobody ever came to me and talked to me, so that's where we're at, too. But I'm just a small farmer, I only farm 150 acres, so we have to, you know, do the best we can with what we got. So we're trying to improve our land. And I don't want to hurt any downstream people, that's not what I'm about. But we have to clean ditches out. If you want the water to keep flowing, you've got to do maintenance, too. And like Jason said, when they farm that piece of land, they never farm these spots. Well, they never clean the ditches out. Clean the ditches out, the water will flow. And as Scott said, the water all flows to the east, and that's the direction. Went to the NRCS, everything's approved there, don't know what else. Thank you.
Mr. Opitz? You know, a lot of times, it is tough to talk to people about these things, and you know, one side goes to the planning department, the other side goes to the planning department. Do you think there's any opportunity here that, in discussing it with your neighbors, that you could come out with a, you know, amicable solution that would, you know, take care of some of their concerns and, you know, would there be any benefit to, say, waiting a week on this to let some communication go on? And I'll ask the Bowles the same question. Would you be open to talking to them about the project?
Yeah, I would be, definitely, no problem there. I'm willing to, like, that piece to the west, I'm willing to run some tile lines up into there, you know, just, I'm not saying the whole thing, but just some additional feet to go up into there. Going downstream, that's bad when you hook together. I don't want to hook together, personally, because you don't know what they can do to the tile later on. They close it, plug it. New owners don't want it, plug it. I, that's where I put my outlet, on where that yellow dot is, because then the waters, I'm outletting the water on my own property. And then it flows where it wants to go, which is east. So, that's why you don't want to hook together on something like that, because that's what I see.
Would you be open to working with them as far as to get their ditches cleaned out?
Yeah, I can find them contractor or whatever. There's lots of people that do that.
I just wonder if there's still some more conversation to be had on this project? Any other comments?
I guess I'd ask the same question of the Bowles family, so thank you.
Sure.
Fellas, could you come back? You know, it's not easy to, once you crosswise with somebody, it's not easy necessarily to make it work out, but I wonder if there's not an opportunity to make this, you know, a win-win, so to speak? Do you think there's a chance that something could work out?
Yeah, like I said, if he would have come over and talked to me, we probably wouldn't be here today.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to defer action for a week to allow for some continued discussion.
Do you think a week is enough?
Do you think a week is enough?
Yeah.
Okay, well, here's the rub. I have a court hearing next Thursday, and the week after that, I'm in trial. So, and Commissioner Kelly can't, or has recused himself, so that would mean we need three commissioners here.
I'll be here next week. Commissioner Benega, do you got a comment?
I guess the question for me is, is if we do delay it a week, is that going to affect your planning or process of getting this completed?
Yeah, it's already wet this long, we can wait. We'll just have to go through the crops, and we'll do it.
Did I make a motion yet, or was there a second?
There was a motion to defer for a week. I need a second.
I'll second it reluctantly.
And a motion and a second reluctantly to defer for one week. Tom, did you have one more comment you wanted to say? You have to come to the podium, sorry.
I guess my comment is, in one week, it takes a lot of time to get all this, from the soil conservation, get all their stuff, you know, their wetlands legal and stuff. It just ain't going to happen in one week. Just, I think they're backed up, I shouldn't say, but I'd say six months to a year, to get all that stuff done. It's been taking a long time to get all my stuff done.
If I might, Madam Chair, I know that there are private contractors that can make an assessment on the NRCS stuff as well. Brian Top now does that, for example, professionally. And at the same time, really, we just want to see if we can get you guys to get along about the issue and make it, they don't necessarily need to put tile in the same year here, but if we could work to make it more agreeable for everybody, that would be my hope.
I have a motion and a second to defer for one week. Are there any other comments? Is there any comments from the proponents or the opponents? Motion, did you have a comment, Jason?
I guess I just have one more. You know, you were saying about we can clean our ditch out, you know, it takes money, too. It's going to cost a lot of money to clean a ditch out. It goes all the way from where our property line starts, clear it down all the way to this stock dam. I mean, you're talking a quarter mile of ditch. Takes a lot of money to clean that ditch out. We only farm 500 acres ourselves, but we just can't afford to clean this ditch out, so we have to deal with it, because we can't justify the cost to clean this ditch out for what little bit we're going to gain.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to defer for one week. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three, two, one. Thank you. We'll see you next week.
Item number 12, consider resolutions to compromise various categories of county aid liens in accordance with county policy. Bob Letts.
Bob Letts from the Auditor's Office, and this is a annual process that we go through. Current policy is to cancel the following categories of county aid liens annually. First one would be liens of more than $30,000, reduced to $30,000. And that list has been reviewed by Human Services. Second category would be liens on deceased persons, reduced to zero. And normally, we wait for one year unless we verify that the estate has no assets, and that list has also been reviewed by Human Services. The third category is liens with no activity for 30 years. Those would be reduced to zero. And the fourth category would be liens under $250 with no activity for 10 years, and reduce those to zero. Now, there is a fifth category that would be liens identified as uncollectible, and we're not going to ask that you compromise that category at this time. So I would request that you approve the attached resolution, so it will cancel the liens that have been identified in the first four categories. Stand by for any questions. Incidentally, the total today that we're asking to be compromised is $689,375.90.
Are there any questions for Mr. Letts?
Mr. Letts?
Yes, sir.
So how much do people owe us?
Right now, the balance that we have with, you know, everything that's gone on since a long time before you and I got here, as opposed to what's been paid and what's been compromised, today, that total stands at $62,275,654.
Enough to run county government for a very long time.
Well, just about get us a year, wouldn't it?
Another comment they would make is, there was a breakdown of where those liens were at, and the lion's share of them, well, I think about, close to $30 million came out of the public defender's office. So, it's kind of, it was kind of interesting to go through and see where we were, where we were giving our money. That isn't being repaid in most cases. I would, if there's no other questions, I would look for a motion for items A through D as one motion.
I would make a motion to approve items A through D.
Scott, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, is it, last year, we actually did these individually, just for clarification in the record. I'm thinking that we probably should be consistent and do them each separately.
Okay. We, I would look for a motion for item A, which is liens for more than $30,000, reduced to $30,000.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on item A. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is liens to deceased persons, reduced to zero.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is liens with no activities for 30 years, reduced to zero.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item D is liens less than 250 with no activity for 10 years, reduced to zero. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion...
I'll motion that.
Thanks. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item E, we are not moving on today, so, thank you.
Item 13 is a briefing from the auditor regarding procedural changes under consideration for organizing and tabulating absentee ballots. Bob Letts.
Good morning again. Bob Letts from the Auditor's Office. On the election side of things today, as most of you are aware of, you know, when we do our elections, our staff does the best to get those returns out accurately and as quickly as possible. Last year during the general election, I don't think we got out there until 4:00, and I was taken to task for, you know, not being as timely as maybe my predecessor had been on a few events. That said, you know, I look for solutions, because I think that, you know, everybody's planning their parties, everybody wants to know what's going on, they want their answers now, and they want them accurate, and I think that we owe the public that to some degree to make that happen. And to that end, in the search for answers, the comparable election entity that I would look at, of course, is Pennington County, because of the population base that they have out there. And Julie Pearson, what she's been doing for a number of years, is she takes the absentee ballots, and she counts them a day early, or at least she opens them up a day early, and then sometimes she's counted them that day and held it on without releasing that information, other times she's counted those ballots in the morning. And what I wanted to do this year was explore that opportunity, and to that end, I've got, I've got a meeting set up with my staff, four key people, that we're going to discuss it this Friday. But I wanted to bring it forward to this commission to get some input from you folks, and see what you felt about us doing that and looking at that thing. I'm not entirely convinced that we're going to change anything or do this, you know, and I would also tell you that in the process of doing this, counting these ballots, we're not doing anything that we don't normally do, except for doing it earlier, and we're withholding the results until we're supposed to release them at 8:00 the following night. It's a matter of organizing those things. I believe it can be done, but you know, I certainly want to get everybody on, I'd like to have this commission on board with that, and I certainly got to have everybody on my staff on board with this as well. And so, like I said, to that end, Friday, we'll be looking this over, but I'd be open to questions from this commission on this idea.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
I just want to comment, Bob, that I think to one point, you're wrong. You are as good as your predecessor on this stuff. I have run several times in this county, and the first time I was elected county commissioner, I didn't know I'd won until 7:30 in the morning. And so these Johnny Come Lately candidates that are complaining about the slow count, they haven't been there. And I think with the increase in absentee ballots that we've been seeing, I think this is a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, if I'm right, this is your call, anyway. I appreciate your keeping us up to date on it, but, and I don't have a problem with it, but it is the auditor's call as chief election official. Is that not right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. However, you know, I don't want to wrestle a match with the commission on it, and I guess I'm looking for, you know, at least some comments from you, observations from you, or improvements that you might have on that idea.
Yeah, I got a, I got a call to question, though, STCL 12-19-43. And I'm just going to read this sentence. It's right in the middle of the statute. "The absentee ballots may be opened, stamped, and placed in the ballot box or processed by an automatic tabulating machine, but under no circumstances shall the ballots be manually counted, nor any vote totals printed or displayed by any tabulating machine prior to closing the polls." So ultimately, you could open them, you can place them in the ballot box, but you can't count them until the polls have closed. That's what that reads. Am I wrong?
If I can clarify, and this is a process that I do know, period through the grapevine, that is used in other counties, but that is a distinction that we need to be really mindful in that statute if you go about it that way, because there is a distinction between actually counting them and opening them, checking the affidavits, all that stuff. So I'd really call your attention to 12-19-43 and be very mindful of what that allows, but what that specifically prohibits, too.
Yes, and I did provide that statute with you.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So it's like I said, Commissioners, I'm not entirely convinced that we're going to do it. I tend to look at it favorably, but like I say, depending on what gets said here today and what happens on our staff meeting Friday, you know, I'd like to look those things over and think about it a little bit. We have time. I think the primary would be a good time to do that, because the volume is less, we'd be able to get our strategy down, we'd be able to get our tactics down on exactly on how to do this here. I think, I think dividing those precincts up into the machines and trying to figure out some balance about how many ballots are going to come in, how many voters are out in a precinct, and what the voter turnout is, so we can kind of balance between the four machines and have those ballots, you know, not, we want the precincts on the absentee ballots to be the same precincts as the regular ballots that come in. And so we've got a little bit of figuring out to do, but it's nothing that's impossible. It's just, it's just the moral.
Okay. Commissioner Benega?
Well, obviously, if it's time-saving, which it will be to open the ballots, people would, I'm assuming, would rather work at 4:00 in the afternoon than 4:00 in the morning to do that. So I don't have a problem with it, and I think it's just your judgment on how you handle that process is fine. If it's being done in other counties, and we can save some time and effort, it also potentially improves some accuracy on the other end.
And it's legal?
Yes.
Appreciate you bringing it forward to us, and at least letting us know what you're considering, and just, we'll look forward to your final decision before the election.
Very good. Now, you would also add that I think it's been a consensus, some of my staff, they'd like to get out of there before 4:00.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Item 14, is there any county commissioner liaison reports?
Are there any liaison reports? We have two here. Commissioner Barth is...
All right. Well, I just wanted to report that in the homeless advisory board, we had a presentation by a company called Redemption Technology. This is a privately-owned operation that's going to start business right over by Handyman, and their hope is to train people to get jobs and hold jobs. They're going to not try to just find them a job flipping burgers, where they're going to leave that job in six weeks. They're hoping to find jobs for homeless people where they will stay for some period of time and find a life. And they haven't started operation yet, but it's right near where the Catholics are building their new facility. It's kind of on the corner of the Handyman parking lot, just north of the Labor Department, just south of Phil's Pub, for those of us that have been around the block. Anyway, that, it's a very positive development, that private individuals are looking at doing what's difficult for us in government and a little easier for them.
Commissioner Benega?
Well, I think it was last week, Commissioner Heiburger and I had a public defenders advisory board meeting, and... board meeting, and we have one individual who has resigned as an advisory board member, and we will probably have at least two, maybe three applicants for that position that we'll bring to you in the near future. But more importantly, as I stated in Tracy's annual review, if you will, and budget of her department, is that she's worked hard with Assumption and Wyland as a trainer, if you will, in doing some, not only staff training, but she's also done some personnel management and accountability training with that group, met with staff, and frankly, has responded to the questions that all of us had asked in previous presentations that she had made about, I would call them, non-billable hours. And much to my surprise, and I think you'd also, Commissioner Heiburger would say the same thing, there's many times that she has no control over those non-billable hours by the judicial system, basically taking and exempting individuals for paying those bills, and they're not getting paid or recorded. And she's done a very good job of accounting for that kind of transaction. So, I think over the next few months, you'll continue to see improvements in the management recording system that was instituted maybe a year ago, not quite that long ago, but also with the fact that she has taken the initiative to follow up with the training that's been provided and a budget that's been put together for her to frankly be tutored in some of the responsibilities of that function. So, I personally think that we need to pay more attention in the budgeting process to the whole training line item because, you know, you can't lead a horse to water and make them drink if they don't understand what we're asking for. And in some cases, you may take the best lawyer and make them the public defender, but that doesn't necessarily always mean that you give them the tools in the toolbox to be able to fix the car. And I think that's going to have to be a conversation that we have in the next few months, because training eventually comes around to cause issues if you don't have it supported the way it needs to be supported. So, that is my opinion at this point.
Who started?
Is the, it was a citizen appointment that, or the citizen that resigned?
Liaison for the commission office. Do you want to call it that?
The layperson, correct.
So, it's our call to reappoint.
But the advisory board, I think, will review the applicants and bring a person to us as a recommendation.
But I think we should really involve ourselves in this one, I mean, look at this a little more seriously than we have probably in the past.
If you have ideas, send them to us.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to mention one other thing that came up during our homeless advisory board. Couple of the nongovernmental organizations have been approached by the state regarding Senate Bill 70 with the idea that they would take, say, nine to 18 parolees under their wing and guide them for a few months. The funding and the contracts haven't quite been worked out, but I just thought we'd be interested to hear this.
I have a couple of things. Last week, or about a week and a half ago, I traveled to New Jersey with the state for the statewide steering committee, the JDAI, expansion statewide and for training under New Jersey's JDAI site as to how to expand statewide. We did a lot of, I guess, just listening, collaborating, trying to come up with different ideas on how to move forward with the state expansion. At this point, I think it was mostly educational. We'll be getting back together for conversation in about a week or so with the state key people that were there to discuss how we're moving this out statewide. One of the important things was to have a statewide assessment tool that you can, the risk assessment tool that we've talked about lots of times in other commission meetings, and that is already in place in the state. So, we're kind of a step ahead of the game already, just having our risk assessment tool already in place that's been used in Pennington County and Minnehaw County very successfully. And believe it or not, from two sides of the states, we agreed on one. So, I think it will be pretty easy to work towards moving it out. It's going to look different in every county. Obviously, we have the two most populated counties. Some of these people only have a few people in their JDC, and so, it's just a way to do business better and to keep kids in the right place at the right time. So, be looking forward to more information coming forward in the future with JDC. The other one is, last night, I was at a chamber meeting where we have Billings, Montana, in town, learning all about the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County and how we're doing things right. And Mark, I wonder if you would just give me two minutes or a minute and just speak about what's going on. I was there just briefly, and it looks like a very exciting meeting. I think they're going to be in town for about 48 hours and be exhausted when they're done.
Yes, thank you. Mark Lee with the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, we were contacted a while back by a gentleman named John Brewer, who is the president of the chamber in Billings. And they arranged what they are titling an aspirational city visit. In other words, they brought 26 people from their business community, from their county government. They didn't bring many people from their city government because they're kind of in the throes of their city budget process right now, and that's really the only reason. To visit Sioux Falls and frankly, to try and figure out what it is that we've done right over these last years that has propelled Sioux Falls forward in such a wonderful way. So, last night, they began, and thank you for joining us last night, Commissioner. It was great. Yesterday, they actually began at the airport. They did a little mini bus tour, and then we joined them at Hilton Garden Inn for dinner and a reception and a presentation. And then today, they began with, they're going on a very long, detailed set of bus tours today. They're looking at a variety of different things in our community. They're going to tour the new events center at noon today, and then they will continue on and end up at the zoo this evening, and they will tour that and look that over. And then tomorrow, they have some more things at the chamber office, and then they depart. So, if you can think about the logistics and the commitment of getting 26 business leaders together to leave at 3:30 in the morning from Billings to get to Sioux Falls and spend all day Monday working on this, all day Tuesday working on this, half day Wednesday, and then, of course, travel back, they are very interested in what's going on in Sioux Falls because they see it as things that they want to learn from and to the best of their ability emulate. So, it's quite a nice affirmation that even though we deal with some sticky problems in our community, things are going well, and this is an affirmation from one community that they view that things are going very well, too.
Says a lot about Sioux Falls.
Yes, it does.
Some of the conversation that went on the brief period of time that I was there was about taxes. I did talk to their county commissioner. They had one present afterwards, and he said that they also run their county strictly off of property taxes, the same as we do. They must have a much higher levy because for the same amount of, basically, their population, their county is the same as ours, but their budget was over, for their county, over $100 million. I said, well, we're at about $65 million. I would have liked to have had more conversation with them, but their tax structure is different in their city, so they are not able to collect the two cents sales tax that the city.
They don't have a sales tax, basically, in my town.
So, their city issues were actually in having more difficulty than their county was. Their city runs off of property taxes, too, but they didn't seem to have the revenue that the county had. And he said something about a cap in the city, so I'm not really sure how.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what their entire structure is either, but it is markedly different. And they are challenged in their visitor industry, trying to attract more activity there. They're challenged in their economic development activities and a variety of things, and so they're here trying to learn as much as they can from the successes we've had over the last 20 years in this community.
Yeah.
Maybe they all won't go back.
I think they also have a beautiful state.
They titled it an aspirational city visit, but they referred to it last night as the jealousy city.
Yeah, they did.
And we are not going to allow them to steal Mr. Sanford from the community. They may have.
Thank you. Is there any new business?
Oh, well.
Commissioner Kelly.
You know, Darren in his presentation today talked about sports district, and, you know, my stomach shrunk because I thought, oh, this is going to be another TIF. And I think somehow, we got to keep an eye on that thing, that they don't find reason to develop this all into a TIF. I think the district itself applying, you know, interest there is one thing, but if they start looking at our tax and what the development's going to be out there, I think we should be very aware of what's going on. And maybe I'm totally off-base, but it just raised the flag.
Any other new business? Any old business?
Well, if I can jump on that bandwagon a little bit, I thought the map, or at least the footprint that was presented, was very aggressive. And I do find it interesting that when I think of the location of where the event center is, and I looked at the breadth of the footprint that actually took up most of northeast Sioux Falls, including the airport, I know that there are some vested interests that are beyond the scope of the city. For example, the airport authority has their own jurisdiction. And I also know that many different businesses relocated into that area because it was an industrial area. And, you know, for example, Bell Box Paper is up there, and we have some other interesting industrial-type capacities that were encouraged to move there. And when they get put into a footprint like that, what's good for what would exist on the northeast corner of this particular area relating to sports may not necessarily fit with what the expectations are for the industrial neighbors down in the southeast corner. So, and of course, the airport authority, they want to make sure that they have open flight paths and safe ingress and egress into the city. So, I think it's going to be an interesting cohort that they're putting together.
Commissioner Kelly.
One other comment, because we're on that. You know, we could sell our property to the city and get some sort of a leaseback of a dollar a year for four years. We know we're going to get rid of that CCC, and that would get us out of the program. They could go forward with their development plans. Frankly, I believe that that may be the next big place for hotels, hotels in this town is in that corridor up there, because there's a lot of available land, and with the convention center and the event center, there's some built-in activity that's important. But I'd like to see us get out of this thing, let the, you know, let the city do its thing out there, and we'd get our money, and, you know, perhaps that money would be enough to finish off the PSB, but I think we do need to act somewhere so that they can continue to develop their plans. I can understand why nobody would really want to come in and make a commitment until they found out what was going to happen with that four acres we own. And if the city owned it, the ball's in their court, we've got our money, and we've got a timeframe to get out of there. And I don't think there's any question, within four years, that building will be gone.
Is there any other new business? I think they asked for old business. Do we have any other old business? With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn for personnel and contract negotiations. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.